Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Gadsden City Council meeting today. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. "For we come to you the humblest way we know how, come with bow heads and humbled hearts, looking unto you the oath and the finish of our faith, realizing all of our help truly comes from the Lord. We thank you for wisdom, insight, and revelation in your guidance to help us to continue to lead our great city and all the constituents of our city. We lift up all the students, faculty, and staff that are present today. Thank you for the counsel. Lift up our mayor, God, and the mayor's staff. We just give you the praise, we give you the glory, we give you all the honor. We ask it all in the matchless name of Jesus, and all the degree said amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on July 30th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 26 through August 1st. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
This brings us to item seven on our agenda. We have a great day today in the City of Gadsden. Mayor Ford's going to make his way down, but we have a lot of guests today. We're glad to have you all here with us, and we're excited to get to honor you and to hear about some of the great things that y'all have been doing. So Mayor Ford, you've got the floor to bring these folks up.
Hey, thank you, Mr. -- thank you very much, Mr. President, Counsel. I want to ask our Quiz Bowl participants to come on up. Our Quiz Bowl champions, how about that?
Yeah.
So I wanted them to know we'll never get tired of seeing y'all up here, okay? So y'all just keep on coming. But I'm going to read this just short paragraph and let you know some of their accomplishments this year. Sixth grade is considered the elementary division. Noah is the captain, Broner Skaggs, Michael Yother, Iris, and if I don't get your name right, help me out behind me, Mackalini, is that correct? Wattsy Alexander, and Kate Harris. In Alabama Elementary Invitationals or tournaments, they either place first or second. Second in Edgewall County behind our eighth grade team playing in the middle school division. Gadsden Middle School, Rainbow Middle, Emma Sanson, Hoax Plus, St. James, and Westbrook. They placed first at Alabama School of Cyber Technology and Engineering, second at ARAB, first at Discovery Middle School, and second in the state championship behind Trussville. They qualified for Questions Unlimited Nationals and won their regional championship. At Nationals, they fail in the semifinals and place third in the nation. Now, our eighth grade team, y'all have met them before, and I'm going to read some of their accomplishments. Their eighth grade team were extremely successful this season. They finished the season with a 71 and five record and placed not just one, but two national championships. In their season, they placed first in every Alabama Invitational Tournament, Edgewall County, ARAB, Discovery, Russellville District, APT, and State. They were the first Gadsden City team to win the Alabama Public Television, APT, and the first team from Gadsden Middle to win a state championship. Noah Scherhouse was also on this team for the state. They prepared and competed in two national championships using two completely different formats, which is very difficult to do. In Chicago, playing the NAQ2 Gadsden Middle School, was the only team from Alabama to make it to the finals and placed 13 out of 160 teams in the nation. Only two other schools in Alabama, Liberty and Discovery, in the history of NAQ2 have ever placed 15 or better. Latika placed 13 out of 793 individually in the nation. Two weeks later, they turned around and competed in -- Noah would be New Orleans, am I that correct? Okay. In a totally different format with Questions Unlimited and won the regional championship, they went on to place third in the nation. Gadsden City was the only school system in the nation to have three teams to make it to the finals in their respective decision, division.
Wow.
So we are here to honor the youth and the children, the smart ones of Gadsden Middle School and High School. But Dr. Bliss, if you would come forward. Y'all need to understand, Dr. Bliss runs this show, and I have learned a lot about Dr. Bliss. She gets paid a lot of money to do this, where she does it. It's just something she takes on extra with her job. And Dr. Bliss, I know they would say this, but we wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't without your help and your organization. And I asked her, I said, "What do y'all do at break?" One time, we were talking in my office, she goes, "Oh, we all get together and we start quizzing each other." And I'm like, "Wow, that's just -- I don't understand it," because I was always in trouble. But I want to thank y'all for coming. And Dr. Bliss, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for being here to support them. I do want to thank the mayor and the city council for all of their support financially to help us to get to Chicago, New Orleans, for the regionals. Judge Robinson, who helped coordinate it, Mac Butler, who did a lot for us. We really appreciate that. It allowed us to get there. I want to thank Mr. Goodwin for his constant leadership in supporting our team. Mr. Blackwell has been here to support us, and we're just very grateful. It's hard for me to speak like this. I am very honored and blessed to be a part of this, to be a part of the school system, to be with these kids.
Don't look at the kids. The kids is what hits you every time.
I know, I know. I love every one of them. They're just like my own kids. May even love some of them better than I do. But they're special. They're so smart, they're so talented, they're so intimidating to be around, to be able to compete with them. I've learned so much from them. A couple of them, the ones in the black shirt, I'm losing. I've had them for the last couple of years, I'm losing them this year. They'll be going up to the high school with Colonel Davenport, which is great, and guys keep an eye on them. They're going to be bringing you another state championship and a national. They're that good. This is our sixth grade, is now seventh graders, they're going to be up and coming. I'm telling you, what they did last year was incredible, and so I'm looking forward to seeing great things from them. Like I said, I can't thank you all enough for your financial support and the way you've helped us, and just the emotional, physical, and just all the support we've had. It's been incredible. Once again, thank you, Mr. Blackwell, for supporting our school, supporting our team and being there for us. I know this means a lot for the kids, for you to be here. And Mr. Goodwin and Ms. Wadley, who's not here, our assistant principal, is our prayer warrior. She always, when she comes to the matches, prays over all of their seats and their areas for them, which is special for us. So do any of you want to say anything? And for those of you who didn't know, who Latika, for up at NAQT, who placed number 13 out of 793 students in the country, she was number 13. There was only two females in the top 25, she was the highest ranked one, but that's an incredible accomplishment to be able to place like that. But all of them are great. And just so that you guys know, we got Lounged Robinson down there, Colt Enders, Latika Prasad, Andrew Nguyen, and then this is our Broner Skaggs, Kate Harris, Wattsy Alexander, and Iris Mackalini. We have a couple, Noah could not be here, Gray Stevens, who is actually on our eighth -- was on our eighth grade team, who's great. I thought he was going to be here, something happened. And then Michael Yother, but like I said, give these guys a hand. They are super, and they are our up and coming generation. They are going to be our next leaders in Gadsden and in the state of Alabama.
So to the kids, I want you to know something. We were recruiting an industry about a month ago, and they want to know about our school system. And we preached the whole message is so goes our school system, so goes our city, and so goes our city, goes our school system. So y'all are a vital part to us being able to recruit industry into town, because the CEOs of these companies, they want to know where they're going to send their kids to school. And one thing I talked about was our Quiz Bowl team, of how y'all did at State, Nationals, et cetera. So I got one last question before I let you go. Does anybody know what Dr. Bliss's husband's name is?
Roy.
It's Dr. Bliss. He's a doctor too, you got it. All right, well, hey, thank y'all very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations to my neighbor, Ms. Iris. We're all very proud of you over on Tarrantine. Mike and Gilda, good to see y'all. Iris, obviously, it's not surprising that she's good at Quiz Bowl. Her father, Mike, is a senior advisor to the United States Department of Energy, and if you ever want to have a really good time, follow him on social media, because most of his travel updates are from places like Antarctica, and Greenland, and Iceland, and all over the world, so it's a lot of fun. Mike, congratulations. I know you and Gilda are proud of your daughter.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Up there and on my emotions, I forgot to thank our parents, all of our parents.
Yeah, would the parents please stand? Yes. Would the parents please stand? Thank you all. Thank you so much, Dr. Bliss. And Mr. Blackwell, man, what a great team you have. My wife's a schoolteacher, my son and daughter-in-law are schoolteachers, and what we just witnessed up here, the love and emotions that came from Dr. Bliss, y'all, that's what makes the Gadsden City school system a great school system. It's not only Dr. Bliss, every educator we have feels the exact same way that Dr. Bliss feels about all of our students. Let that just sink in for a minute. I mean, what we just witnessed was just marvelous, and I mean, there is so much love coming from our educators. They want all of our students to succeed and to be successful. They do these jobs because it's a calling, it's not necessarily a job to them. And Mr. Blackwell's in the same category. Principal Chance Goodwin at Gadsden Middle School does a marvelous job. Chance, we're proud to have you. And behind you there, Dr. Bliss, you're at which school?
I'm at the high school, and I do whatever Mr. Gilda tells me.
Well, that's good, and we are blessed to have you and your wife here in our city and in our school system. It's a -- this is the backbone. This is what makes it Mayor Ford, and you've said it in a nutshell, this is what industries look for. Like, where are my children going to go to school if I move to Gadsden, Alabama? What kind of a system is it? And I think it's self-evident, we have a very good school system, and it's attributable to the teachers and the faculty and the leadership that starts with Mr. Blackwell at the Board of Education, so. And also to you parents, thank you very much. It's -- y'all do a wonderful job, you have wonderful children, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Is it possible for us to slip the kids up there and get a picture with you guys?
You know, we always do that. I don't know why -- yeah, bring the kids back up here. If y'all will line up in front of this council dais right here, we'll get a good picture. Come on up, Wattsy, coming up right here. How are you?
I'm good.
Good to see you. Proud of you. Proud of all y'all.
Is this your mom?
Yeah, my pastor. Yeah. Come on up. Oh, there's our guy. You're a constituent, Steve. The young man there. Yeah. He made it, that's good.
That's up great, I want to check.
Yeah.
All right, everybody look right here. You need to come over, Dix.
Thank you, Michael. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bliss. Nice to meet you, thank you.
Don't look at the kids, man. It's a direct tearjerker, man. Hey, Keith. Keith, you want to say something? All right. Go ahead. Yeah. Y'all, I've invited City Superintendent Keith Blackwell to share a few words with us while he's here.
You got no questions to ask.
Liam, your son, because.
Can you turn your mic off? Oh, sorry. Little green button.
There we go, got it. To give Lee a hard time, because his, oh, I don't know, did he leave his -- your son, he left. Former student, Gadsden City High School, so he's standing back there with me while we're talking about the -- all these kids, which they deserve, you know, all the accolades that they get, and he says, "I need to get some of their numbers, because we have Wednesday night trivia down at the college. I'm going to call them over, because I'm going to go from third place to first." I was like, "Where'd you go?" Just like his dad, trying to find an angle on something, right? I appreciate, I had to run over from in-service, which I appreciate, you know, the mayor came over this morning and spoke to the entire school system about in-service, and it is a representation of all of us, you know, in all the positions we're in, what these kids do. It represents the City of Gadsden, you know. When you talk about, everybody wants to win a state championship in sports, that's all that's ever talked about, and granted, we do. But we're the academia, you know, that's -- we're the champions in the state of that. When you put the best of the best kids against each other, we win. Something to be said for the City of Gadsden, the kids we have here, that you, as counsel, can go out and boast about that and talk about it, stick your chest out and say, "Hey, this is what we do here." I didn't come up here so, you know, to have the opportunity to speak, you know, I got invited to come up, but I will say this, aside from that, Thursday, school starts. If you can, within your districts, if you can come out in that, you know, that morning as the -- as kids, especially elementary schools, as kids are arriving, doors are opening, and they're getting out of the cars and going, you know, if you have the opportunity to come to any of that, just to say hey to the parents and the kids as they, you know, start their first day back for '24, '25, it'd be great if you could. We'd greatly appreciate that. And one thing I'd ask for you, as the school year goes, I have told my principals that I want them and their communities, as much as they can be, don't stay within your four walls and expect people to always come to you. I want them out and about, so they can see the people within their respective districts in the community. So if you have something that goes on in your district, or you're going to have people involved, parents, would you please, you can email me, or you can call me, and I'll call them, but reach out to the principals in your districts and invite them to come to anything that you have, because I want them out. You know, the more the parents can see them away from their schools, the better it is for us as a school system and them as a principal. So if you would, please remember that. And I said to Councilman Wilson, he's exactly right, when you deal with kids and you're around kids for a long time, and you get up and you talk about them, making eye contact with them, you're trying to talk about them, is usually leads you down a bad road, because you'll get upset, so that's exactly right.
Instant waterfalls, if you're looking at the kids while you're talking. Just don't look at the kids, they'll get you every time.
But we had a good in-service, all the teachers are still going to do it on the first day. Once again, thank you, Mayor, for coming and speaking to them. So I'm always accessible, if you need me, call me, but please do reach out to the principals within your districts and invite them to anything that you may have going on. So thank you for the time.
And Superintendent Blackwell, I couldn't agree more with you about the academic achievements of this school system, but if you don't mind picking us up a state championship in football this year, that'd be great.
No, no. If only I had Coach Smith standing here with me.
Ah, there you go.
Well, yes, thank y'all.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it, thank you. Well, y'all, we're going to continue with some exciting things. I'd like to recognize Glenn Ingram and any of his folks that are here. I think I see Christina Richardson out there also, the director of Nakalula Falls. Christine, if you want to come up also, Mayor, are you going to be involved down there?
I'm down. I'm just taking a look at that.
However you want to do it, that's a -- but we're glad to introduce Glenn Ingram with the Gads -- well, I'm going to let Glenn tell him who he's with. Gadsden Runners Club.
Good morning, yes. I'm with the Gadsden Runners along with my friends here. We've had a great relationship with the city for over almost 12 years now. Collectively, during that time period, we've probably raised and given back --
I get a bail.
-- over $100,000 back within the community. Generally, when we have an event, we keep just enough seed money for the next event, but everything goes back. To date, we've given over $50,000 to Nakalula Falls Park, and today is just a little bit more in that donation. We've given probably over $50,000 to United Way, and then countless other. I know we have, we're in partnership with the Man Up Gadsden for the Dash for the Stash to help for men's health as well. But today, we're happy to present a check for $10,000 we're giving back to Nakalula Falls. We want to help the city with their renovation. We have a lot of our events there. We have our spring trail half marathon and five mile. Anyone would like to come out and help train for that, or run with us, or walk part of it with us, we'd be glad to have you. But we've had a great relationship with the city, and this is just one more step. What was given to you was a trail bet, and that's how we used to recognize accomplishment, okay? But want to get a picture, want to give y'all the check, and who gets the real check?
I'll take care of it. But if we get a picture?
Get on down there, Chris.
I know, Chris.
Yeah, Councilman Robinson.
Wrong.
That might hurt too, that mistake.
Something's going to make a big noise.
Yeah.
Number three, one, two. All right.
The mayor asked me to talk just a little bit about the money that the Runners Club has given us over the years, and I'll tell you a real, real quick story about Glenn Ingram and the Runners Club. I've been with the city for 11 years, and I'd only been here a few months, and my director asked me to meet with Glenn Ingram. He wanted to show me seven tenths of a mile, I think, or something like that, of trail that they wanted to build. And so I went to the gym that day, and then I went and met with Glenn, and we walked six miles that day. So that's kind of always, that's how I met Glenn. I spent six miles worth of trail with him, but that was the first thing they did when I came on board, was they built a whole new trail. And so they have continued to help expand and improve the Black Creek Trails with the funds that they have donated. And I do know that specifically, they would like to see this go towards improvements of the stage area. They use it for awards and such with their events, and I know that's kind of what we're looking at with Phase Two of the campground remodel, which, you know, may get cut and cut and cut some more to fit in the budget, but we do appreciate the funds, and he said, "As long as their name's not on a bathroom, they're happy." So even though the Runners Club probably uses those trail bathrooms more than anything, nobody wants their name on a bathroom. But we do appreciate, I appreciate Glenn, and he is someone who has helped us with Barbarian Challenge over the years, helped us get that off the ground when the city bought it. He has been a huge asset to the Gadsden Runners Club, and I'm glad to see that they are continuing to give back to the city.
Thank you.
Glenn, I just want to say thank you to you and the Runners Club. When I got elected, Christina told me all about you, and I already knew a little bit about you, but how much money you've put back in the falls, and to the people and the citizens of Gadsden, and the people that use it, how much we appreciate y'all, so thank you.
Sure. You.
Thank y'all so much for what you do, not only of the money, but just the sweat equity that y'all have invested at the Falls over, oh, gosh, however many years, 20 years or so? I know Councilman Robinson was part of the original group, I think, with all of you, and so that's just, it's very -- again, that's what makes Gadsden great, Mayor. We've got folks, we've got great students, great educational system, we've got great citizens that want to give back and not asking for anything other than an opportunity to help, to make our city better. So great example, thank y'all very much. All right, the last person that we want to recognize today is a special day for Tina Morrison with the Gadsden Edgewall Tourism. This is her anniversary, one-year anniversary of being with our tourism board as our director. And Tina, happy anniversary and welcome.
Thank you.
And she's going to, you're going to share some information about your first year and some other upcoming tourism-type events for the city.
I am, thank you very much. As Kent Beck said, I am Tina Morrison, Executive Director for Greater Gadsden Area Tourism. We are a destination marketing organization, and believe me, we have plenty to market here. There's always things going on. I just wanted to tell you, in August, the state of Alabama has Alabama Restaurant Week, and it's actually about 10 days, but we're promoting all of our great restaurants the entire month of August, so you'll be seeing a lot of those posts, and we promote restaurants in the entire county. And then in September, on the 21st, there's something called the Great Alabama 650, and that is a large kayak canoe race that goes throughout the whole state. They will be starting at Weiss Lake and they finish at Fort Morgan. So they'll be coming through Gadsden on September 21st, so we're going to have a watch party at Buffalo Wild Wings and cheer them on, and both of those are statewide events that we can get involved in, and they get statewide recognition, so we hope you can come out for that on September 21st. And then the flyers that I just passed out, in October, we're doing a new thing called Season of Honor. And basically, what we're doing is we're combining two existing events that are veteran-focused, and we've got two new events to add to that, to make a month-long Season of Honor, just to show everyone that Edgewall County supports our veterans. So on October the 6th, there's a group of Navy veterans, and it's called Bama Rama 500, and they are riding bicycles all the way through the state of Alabama to raise awareness for veterans causes like suicide, adoption, things like that. And so they will be riding bicycles, they will be here the night of October 6th, one night, they are staying in a hotel here, and we got them a veteran discount to stay right here. Then we will be shuttling them up to the Olaleem Eyes Patriots Park at Nakalula, and we'll be having a short ceremony there to honor them, we'll be catering them with dinner. There's about 20 riders and about 10 crews, so it'll be about 30 people. That is open to the public, anyone's invited. We are going to feed the riders, the group of 30, dinner at Nakalula after that, and then we will shuttle them back down to their hotel at Gadsden Inn and Suites, she provided a veteran discount. And then the next morning, about nine o'clock, they'll all be out in the parking lot, and each morning before they continue their ride, and as I said, they're going all the way through the state of Alabama, they'll finish at Orange Beach Gulf Shores. But every morning before they go, they do 22 push-ups in the parking lot to pay tribute and honor the 22 veterans that take their life by suicide every day. So anybody is welcome to come and join us, come and do push-ups with them. We will have people on hand to kind of wave them in town, wave them out of town, so I'm really excited that we are participating in that. I met with those folks, and they are super excited that we are, you know, honoring them and getting the city behind that. And then the next event that we have on there, you'll see, is Frank Towers Day. What we would like to, we'll come back and ask you, but what we'd like to do is have a proclamation designating October 31st as Frank Towers Day. Frank Towers was the first Edgewall resident to die in World War II, and he was a Gadsden City Police Officer, and he has a star on Broad Street and Third, I believe it is. So the morning of October 31st, we realize that is Halloween, so we'll kind of do it early before all the, for all the costumes come out, but we're going to do a little ceremony there at the star and just, you know, pay tribute to Mr. Frank Towers, who was also a Navy veteran. And then an existing event, a Walk Through Time, happens, is it 20th or 21st? I don't have it in front of me. 20th, October 20th. And they are doing a special tribute this year to the World War II veterans as well, so we're including that in our promotion. And then finally, we end on November 6th with the Patriots Association Veterans Parade. So just want to invite all of you guys to take part in these veterans' events, and if you have any companies, businesses, that say they're veteran-friendly, send them to me, and we'd love to include anybody in this event. Any questions?
Wow, that's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Tina? Well, we want to, again, congratulate you on one-year anniversary.
Thank you.
Being with Greater Gadsden Tourism, and you're doing a wonderful job. There's a lot of things going on, and it's evident, you've got to move from the amphitheater office to Broad Street and I think that's been a good move for you.
It's very exciting, yes.
Yeah, that's just great. So we'll just stay in touch with us.
All right, I will. Thank you.
You're welcome here anytime.
I was sitting here Googling, trying to, so I'm in the guard and we have a lot of suicides and I'm just glad to see that we're recognizing that. We're constantly trying to educate soldiers with all the resources that are available and I'm going to get, email you some resources too, Tina. But it's a big deal what she's talking about and I want to thank you for doing that for the veterans on behalf of them.
Thank you very much. Honored.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. All right, and I think that concludes all of our special guests. I don't want to, Mayor, do you want to introduce our, the new employee? Do you want to do that?
Come on back up, Tim.
While we're, while we're getting into.
So this is our new Director of Parks and Rec Department and we sat in pre-council. We interviewed quite a people, over a dozen, and we narrowed it down to a couple. We invited them both to come back. And when we met with him the second time, it was just a feel-good, it was the right fit for us in Gadsden. The experience that he brings to Gadsden and the ideas that he has, as he's wanting to participate with more youth sports and adult sports and more activities will help us generate more revenue. But I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Sure. Hello again, Mayor and Council. I am glad to be part of Gadsden's family. As I said, I have a 22-year background in parks and recreation. I'm so excited to be part of a city that is forward-thinking and excited about engaging with their citizens and giving them opportunities to recreate because a lot of people forget parks and recreation is how your citizens kind of blow off steam, kind of get peace of mind, exercise. It's important to your quality of life. A lot of places disregard that and I see that Gadsden prioritizes that and that's exciting for me. That's one reason when I was offered the job, I was excited to say yes very quickly because Gadsden has so much potential. I do have a, like I said, a 22-year background in parks and recreation from Pell City to Clorsial, Tennessee, back to the Birmingham area and now to Gadsden. I hope and am looking forward to sharing my knowledge and experiences with the city, bringing in new ideas, new activities, new events, any way I can just make the citizens' livability better and just promote the city of Gadsden. I'd like to take us to a state and national level where, as the Quiz Bowl team was doing, I'd like to bring home awards on the national level. I came from a city in Clorsial, Tennessee where we were an accredited Parks and Recreation Department. I think we can get there as the city of Gadsden. I think we can be a national representative of the state of Alabama in this department as well. So I'm excited to be a part of your team. I'm looking forward to any ideas, comments, just pick your brain, pick my brain. I'd be excited. Thank you, Mayor Ford.
So Matt's, well, he's also an educator and, to let you know where he'll be located at the, where the Fisheries Office used to be at Gads State going down the hill. We are renovating that courtesy of Dr. Kathy Murphy allowing us to use that building. So that's going to be the new Parks and Rec headquarters. So we're, that should be done within the next 30 days completed. So that's where his office will be. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Gads.
Thanks, Matt. Welcome, welcome to the city of Gadsden. All right, well, we'll move forward then. Section 8 in our agenda is unfinished business. This is an 8A is an ordinance. This amends City Code, Chapter 18, Article 2, Regarding Buildings and Building Regulations. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It corrects a slight error made in Ordinance Number 0 dash, excuse me, Ordinance Number O dash 01 dash 24, which changed the fee schedules in City Code, Section 18 dash 33. The base fee for commercial permits should be $31 rather than $32. The city software was updated to the correct amount and no one was negatively affected. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property located at 221 Broad Street in District 3 for storage of city records. If an agreement for compensation cannot be reached with the owner, this authorizes retention of Dana Rice Esquire to institute court proceedings to obtain the property in accordance with the eminent domain laws of the state of Alabama. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is to provide plans and specifications required to construct Phase 1 of the South Gadsden Drainage Project. The amount is $193,000 and will come from American Rescue Plan Funds. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is to provide plans and specifications required to construct Phase 5 of the Gadsden Sports Park, which includes an additional youth baseball softball field with artificial turf. The amount is $42,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Last resolution is item 12. It authorizes an agreement with EE Group Incorporated. This is to provide electrical plans and specifications required to construct Phase 5 of the Gadsden Sports Park and the amount is $34,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is new business. I think we have two items this morning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The first one I have is from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Gadsden and Brett Watts for asphalt paving consulting and superintendent services. The rate is $75 an hour. Just, just to summarize, in the past, we have outsourced the paving of our roads to third-party contractors. That's become increasingly challenging to find contractors who are willing to work at the pace that we're trying to pave roads, number one. Number two, that, that aren't cost prohibitive. So we've made the decision to try to bring as much of that paving in-house as we can. So we'll be acquiring our own paving equipment. Mr. Watts ran a local asphalt paving business and construction firm for several decades. He recently sold the business and is now retired. So we have entered into an agreement with Mr. Watts. He will be paid $75 an hour. He will work as a contract employee. He will not be an employee of the city, but he will be a contractor of the city and he will oversee the city's employees that are actually performing the paving work. So again, the city will be acquiring their own paving equipment, will be staffing that equipment with city employees and Mr. Watts will serve as a third-party contractor who will oversee the day-to-day operations of that division and, and also help us determine what roads are paved and when and how we source the asphalt and how we bid that asphalt out to different suppliers and whatnot. So with that in mind, everybody I know wants more paved roads. This will help us do it faster. So if there's no objections, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent is being granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the only other item I have comes to us from the Police Department. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Gadsden City Police Department and Blue Search LLC to provide analytical services on social media and also an analyst if needed. The total budgeted amount is $25,000. And again, to summarize, this is a third-party organization, Blue Search LLC, that utilizes artificial intelligence and web searching technology to assist the Police Department in the solving of major crimes. It can do things like analyze social media activity, identify suspicious, suspicious comments or messages or interactions on social media. And again, just to clarify, this is for existing crimes, the solving of existing crimes. This is not a proactive thing. If you're hanging out with your buddies, having some beers and smoking a doobie, nobody's coming to knock on your door. That's, that's not what this is for. It's to solve crimes, violent crimes in our community, utilizing social media as a tool for data analysis. So with that in mind, I would ask my colleagues that there's no objections to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent is being granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Item 14, or number 14 in our agenda is Department Reports, Committees and Boards. Do we have any of those today, Mayor Ford?
I don't think so.
None to report today? All right. Item 15 is citizen request. We have Sentara Hurd, that's going to come today to speak in regards to Gaga's Bar and Grill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Today, you allowed me to speak last week, but I didn't have everything that, to rebuttal some of Officer Intrigan's remarks. So I have like a PowerPoint that I wanted to go down, some things that I think that are necessary for you to hear, basically just to the citations. He started with September when himself and Officer Mike James from Birmingham, he is over the security of all bars and clubs, and they came and did an educational, as Officer Intrigan said, and we talked about our security. All my security are licensed and bonded, but he had to do an educational on that and we also went over hours of operation. Officer Mike James stated that we had, we closed on Fridays, 4:00 a.m. and Saturdays, 2:00 a.m. At this point, Officer Intrigan did not correct Officer James at any time. We finished this educational in September, this is September 23. I've operated as such for two months. On November the 10th, 2023, is when Officer Intrigan and the Gadsden Police Department came to Gaga's to shut me down. And I asked him, we talked and I asked him, why, why am I being closed down? He said, because you're operating after hours. I said, well, we spoke in September on educational when Officer James stated that we stayed open until 4:00 a.m. on Fridays and you never corrected them. He said, well, that's a state ordinance and this is a city ordinance. You have to comply with the city ordinance. Okay, from that point on, I have operated as such. He also stated that at that time, I didn't have my receipts there for my alcohol and I didn't. I took them home from my home office because I do my revenue for the city and the state every month. I don't have an office at my bar. So two weeks later, from that point, he came with ABC and I sat with ABC and I produced all my receipts, which I have here today. I have all my receipts from the time I opened to present day. Everything I have purchased come from ABC. Moving along, I did not get citated for that because I produced all of my receipts as I have today. He also mentioned that there was a shooting in the area. I can't control the area, I can only control Gaga's. And he mentioned that the, this particular weekend, that the health department's window got shot out. We were not open that week or weekend of that. I had my floors done and did some renovations in there and I had a floor sign put in by Allen's, "Trim It Up." I have the receipts here and we were closed. So I went Sunday to check on my floors and my door too was shot out, the same weekend that the health departments were shot out. I made a police report, which I have here today, because we weren't there, so it did not have anything to do with Gaga's or any patrons at Gaga's. Once I made a police statement, the police reached back out to me and this young man, he is the one that is responsible for, he was arrested, I guess, shooting the health department, mine and three other businesses on that street. That was just another point that was made, so I was showing that. Moving along from that point, there was, in April of this year, I had, that was where citation number two came in and I take full accountability for that. We had a party that night and some young ladies had, got into an altercation. We put them out and as we put them out, they started in the parking lot, time ran over trying to get all this and that's when the police were called. I take responsibility for that because that was after 2:00 a.m. and at this point, I knew that we closed at 2:00 a.m. Moving along, we get to citation three. From April to this point, I have operated as such, closed at 2:00. Matter of fact, when I have shut down, there are some patrons that still congregate in the parking lot and across the street. So I, three, on three occasions from April to now, I called the police. I let them know, hi, this is the owner of Gaga's, we are closed, but they are still outside, can you do a ride-through? I've had three ride-throughs done here recently because I can't get them out of the parking lot. So I have tried to team up, like I said before, with Gadsden, the Police Department. I am trying to work with them, not against them, nor be a nuisance to the community. We do a lot for the community. I use Gaga's now as my platform because I team up with a lot of, to do back for the community. I team up with Toys for Tots, Family Savings, and we do a lot to give back for anything that's going on at the time. Back to school, this year, we didn't do a public one, but all of my employees, it's only four of us, we all took three families on and did all school supplies. I have served the public for over 22 years as a nurse. I've worked in the medical field. Recently, after COVID is when I made this my baby and I started this, but I have changed my hours. I am in the preparation of turning this into a restaurant. And in the process of this, from then to there, I have, I've still changed my hours. There is no longer a problem of me staying open after hours. But the point that I was making with the last citation, we were closed and I wasn't there. My manager, which she's not able to be here today, but she was there and I called at 1:50 and asked her and she said that the lights are on, the music was off and she had people coming out, but we still had 10 people at the time waiting on food orders. So by the time I got there, it was maybe five minutes after 2:00 and the police came at that time and they stayed because they saw that it was only a few people in there waiting on their food orders. That's maybe another issue I have to come up by, can we sell food after hours? But my hours are to close way before 2:00 with the restaurant. But that particular night, we were closed. We just had maybe five to 10 people in there waiting on food. So that citation, I contested it, but as of now, I, I've changed everything and I'm here asking you all to give me another chance to show and change the narrative of things because this is a positive business. It brings a lot of income and revenue to the city. It's not a nuisance. I'm, I'm just trying to work and see what all I need to do to comply to make things better. And I just wanted to come up here and bring all of this evidence and show you that I am working with and it's not, nothing against you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hurd.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to item 16, remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford, again, welcome, welcome back, welcome home. I know you've been out, we have missed you, but, but I know you stayed in touch the whole time, so.
Yeah, bless, I was going to say bless me, excuse me.
So, welcome back, welcome back.
If you don't mind, when we get through talking, if I could get our city attorney, Lee, we're going to excuse ourselves, we have a call with a company here in town.
Sure.
So the real quick, a big deal is Community Safety Night is tonight. Our Police Department and Tina King and Jesse and our Public Relations and Michael and Garrett have all put a lot of time into this. This is a big deal tonight at 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the venue. So if y'all could all be present, all the Police Department, Sheriff's Department are all participating in this. This is a national movement, what people are putting on now, it's kind of just come and see all the police, see the vehicles and it's just kind of a fun dunking boots and everything. Okay, so please stop by. Please don't forget, this is the first week of school. We will be patrolling speed zones, areas for school, for school districts. So school zones, you slow down. We will not be giving out warnings. We did that last year, we're going to be handing out tickets. So please tell your people in your district, and I'm asking everyone to please, slow down. We don't need any accidents of hitting children or hitting anyone in a school zone. They're all clearly marked, that's one thing we made sure of last year, as we inspected each school zone area, made sure we had proper signage, proper posting of speed limits. We will be, there's no secret, patrolling school zones. Okay, so please, if you know this, please slow down. Okay? That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President. But I just want to say congratulations to the Quiz Bowl team and I just want to say congratulations to the Quiz Bowl team and its sponsors and all involved with them. I would like to make an announcement at the 2024 Parents Symposium, which is hosted and sponsored by Black Alabamians for Education. That is going to be held this coming Saturday, August the 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It was an awesome event last year, and I'm sure it would be even better this year. Their keynote speaker is Joseph Walker III. And if you know him, you can see his accolades and all there on their website. It is, it's not necessary, but they do ask that you register because they provide a meal and want to get a good head count. So, if you see the advertisement somewhere, you can, there's a QR code there, or you can go directly to the Black Alabama for Education website, which is wwwblackalforedu.org, and register for that evening. And again, that's this coming Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it is at the venue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Smith, welcome, welcome home. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be back. Wow, just amazing week on last week, first time in Africa, but it's certainly no place like home, so glad to be back. Just another good day of government. Looking forward to tonight's safety meeting as well as the symposium. Last year was amazing. If you missed it, Roland Evans, Roland Martin, excuse me, on last year, and certainly I know Pastor Joseph Walker, the presiding bishop over the Full Gospel Fellowship, is going to be amazing as well. We want to thank all you for being out. Congratulations to the kids, the Scholars Bowl, and all their achievements that they have accomplished. Thank you also, Ms. Heard, you know, relationship to me, right? No relationship to my wife at all. Okay. Didn't come here at my request, of course, but just thank you for that information. If I could, I would like to get a copy of that information. Of course, we won't make a decision on that for a few weeks. I just want to be able to make an informed decision if you could do that for me. Doesn't have to be today, but I would just like to get more information. Haven't talked to anybody up here about your situation before today except President Beck, so I'd just like to get some more information if I could, but I appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Avery?
Want to welcome, I didn't get, what's the last name of the Parks Director?
Matt.
Oh, Nixon.
Nixon.
Welcome you to the team. Looking forward to all of that you're bringing to the table and as well as to the city. Also, want to congratulate, continue congratulations to the Gadsden City School System and their faculty team on their continued efforts of striving to be, to live up to the city of Want to give a big shout out to two organizations as it relates to, one to District Three and the one that has served the city. Both of them are serving the city, but these are two I'm aware of and some things they've done here this past week. One is CCRC for their first Saturday event. I think they partnered with also Men on Bikes, with giving out hundreds of school supplies. So, want to thank those two organizations for what their continuous effort. They do things monthly, so this is not a one-time effort. So, they do these type of events monthly. It's giving away to, to resources to the community and those in need, even from free haircuts to supplies to school teachers as well as students. So, again, thank you for your continuous efforts, continue doing those things. You are applauded for that. Want to make an announcement that Clem's Cuts and Shaves are giving away free haircuts to any student. And this is any student from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that is at 1432 East Broad Street in Gadsden, Alabama here. And this will be on August the 6th, so August the 6th, that's today, I think, yeah, today, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Want to give a big appreciation to also all the Divine Nine for their efforts that they are doing, have been doing as relates going back to school and things of that nature as well. As it mentioned, the superintendent mentioned that if we could come out and to welcome our kids, so District Three, we're ahead of the game. We've put out an announcement, I think, maybe about two or three days ago, so we're calling out all fathers, uncles, mentors, leaders, any male figure, and particularly, we're doing male figures, but of course, any females as well are welcome, so please don't take that in offense, but all male figures, if you could come out to our back-to-school celebration on August the 8th, 7:30 a.m. at Gadsden Head Start Child Development at 513 Henry Street here in Gadsden, Alabama. Last year, we had characters that came out, and that just really wowed the kids. It was really amazing just to kind of just see their reaction to the welcoming, high-fiving, the prayers. Even the staff was very excited to see the characters. So, want to thank all those that came out last year, looking forward to all those that are coming out this year. Again, that's a back-to-school celebration at 7:30 a.m. All those that can come on August the 8th at Gadsden Head Start Child Development at 513 Henry Street, Gadsden, Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything really, other than to say, let's go Team USA. We're up to 78 medals, I think. We're the top medal-winning country in the Olympics, so y'all don't forget, the Olympics are going on for another 10 days. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Monatra?
I just wanted to give, this Friday, the Gadsden Public Library is going to host a seminar, and it's to inform the public about all the scams that you all are receiving, whether it's computer, phone, et cetera. The event's going to be very informative. It's going to start at 4:00, and that's the Gadsden Public Library this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was up, I was up early this morning around 5:00. I was watching the Olympics. I think we actually have tied the gold medal too as of this morning, so I mean, that was a little gap there for a little while, but I've been more interested in it this year, I think, than I have in the past.
Yeah, we have, I think we have 22 gold medals now. I believe we just won a gold medal in shortboard women's surfing this morning.
Yeah, we did, and that was actually over in Tahiti or something. I thought that was very interesting. It was 12 hours away out of Paris. But anyway, enough about the Olympics.
Also, Ms. Faulkner, first ever cyclist to win a gold medal.
She sure did. I watched, I watched that. She kicked it in, she kicked it in late. That was really nice. I watched that one live also. Like to thank Mr. Glenn Ingram and all, and Gadsden Runners of all they do, not just at Noclo Falls, but all over the city. You guys have donated tons and tons and tons of money throughout the years to better the community in different areas. Appreciate what you're doing with the amphitheater part of the Noclo Falls. I saw that on the renderings a while back, and that's one of my favorite parts of it, I believe. I know the campground's going to be beautiful, but I want that amphitheater to look the way that rendering looks. Tina Morrison, congratulations on your one-year anniversary. Nothing but good things coming out of tourism. Love everything you got going on. Congratulations on that and look forward to the future on that. And Mr. Matt Nixon, love everything you said about Parks and Rec. Can't wait to get more and pick your brain and do that. I think it's going to be real fun. That'll be all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Want to echo all the thanks to those that are here this morning, Glenn and Gadsden Runners Club, and Christina Richardson, thank you for all you do for the city and Noclo Falls. I mean, it's the showplace of the South up there, and it just continues to get better. Appreciate your leadership and your hard work up there and all the volunteers. And Tina Morrison, thank you for being here today. You're always welcome, and thank you for the vision and leadership you're showing in tourism for our city and for our county. It's very refreshing, and we're certainly glad you're in Gadsden. Thank you very much. You heard about the event tonight at the venue. This is all, want to make sure, this is not just the Gadsden Police, it's all local law enforcement agencies in Attawal County. So, if you've got young folks in your family, this is a great time to come out. You'll get to see a lot of fun things, get to meet officers, get to talk, have questions. The first 200 students or children get T-shirts, and there's food. Food is free, and so there'll be, there's going to be a lot of fun, and it's just a great way to introduce young people to law enforcement officers, so they'll have a, hopefully a positive vision of our law enforcement officers and how they work in our community. It's good for both sides to get to meet like this on a, in a common ground, for a common cause, to make our community better. Hats off to our school and our education system and our young people this morning. You know, there's so many facts coming out about what that group of kids did, but I mean, it's just astounding what they've done. National championships, finishing in the top, what, 15 in the whole country. Only one other school's ever had like, I forget the things now, but we were, they've accomplished some things that's never been done before in the entire state of Alabama, and so that's outstanding. And I was just, when they were talking about that, I saw a post on social media where Gadsden City High School, which has a large Hispanic population, every teacher now is going to have a, an actual, it's not a phone, but it's a device, and if you speak into that in English, it will produce that comment in Spanish. And then vice versa, if you've got a student that can't speak English and they need to ask a question, then they can speak into that, and then the teacher knows what they're asking and what their needs are. I think that's a wonderful thing, y'all. That's how we're supposed to reach out to everybody. Today's a great example of our kids that are grown up here and doing well in academics, and you've got another segment of our population that is struggling just to know the English language, but they're learning that language. And so, I love how our school system is reaching out and touching all aspects of all students and not just one certain segment. So, it's real exciting to see our school system grow and emerge as a leader in all kind of categories. So, very proud to be in Gadsden today, proud for the great morning we've had, is to borrow a phrase that Councilman Smith would say, we've had good government today here in the city of Gadsden. So, thank you all for being here, and we will be adjourned. Forgot about that. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's right in front of me, and I looked right at it. Next week, Tuesday, we are not going to have a city council meeting. A majority of the council is attending a meeting sponsored by the Alabama League of Municipalities, so we will not have a work session or a council meeting. Our regular schedule will resume on Tuesday, August 20th. Thank you so much for that reminder. I appreciate you.